...of the zoning and land regulation committee. The first item on the agenda, this is a public meeting, so I just want to emphasize it's a public meeting, as our schedule's been a little different in April due to some religious holidays, so it is a public meeting, and the first item is any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on with introductions of committee members and the staff. I'm the chair, Mary Colart. To my right is Supervisor Dennis O'Laughlin, held by Supervisor Jerry Bullock and Supervisor Al Matano. We also have with us this evening Youth Governance Member Garrett Stone. The staff here this evening is the Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Everson and also Planner Brian Standing.
And Todd Lee Montes.
Where's Todd? There is Todd. And also, thank you, Director of Planning and Development Todd Vialanti. Again, this is a public hearing meeting. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out one of these white forms. The white forms are right there. If you have the fill-out form and you wish to speak either in support or in opposition, please be sure to fill out one of those white forms. When a petitioner is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the tables up here and have a seat and address the committee. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is as follows. After the petitioner or agent, any persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the committee. Please contain remarks to the committee members that are before you. Not any individuals, and there will be no running debate. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received. A decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full county board. If the committee passes the petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is the final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the full county board. The next county board meeting is May 4th. The next CLR committee meeting is May 9th. Okay, first item is rezone petition 11,099, Doyle Farms, Inc., in the town of Oregon. Are you Donovan Johnson?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Donovan Johnson. I live at 753 Leeward Lane in Oregon, Wisconsin. I'm looking to purchase a lot on our family farm to build a house.
Anything else you want to tell us? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, thank you. Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
I have a question for staff. Brian?
Yeah.
Under the staff comments in the report, there's an indication in the last sentence that staff suggested amending the...
Yeah, that has been amended, so if you look at the proposed map here, it has been amended to include that lot in the A2-1 district. And it already exists in the line of compliance.
So we're all set, and I'll make a motion to approve. Is that good?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion?
One last quick question on that matter. What's before us, is that what the town approved, then, the submitted version, or...
This would have to go back to the town.
Thanks.
As an amended petition.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you. Next is rezone 11,006, Handerville Real Estate LLC in the town of Dunkirk.
My name's Brett Olson. I live at 504 Handerville Road in Edgerton. I'm part of Handerville Real Estate. We purchased this farm, and we're just putting out the house. And we are redrawing the lot lines from where they used to be because they went through a couple of buildings and they weren't quite what we wanted. So, yeah, I guess I speak in favor of it, so.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. There's an indication on here by staff to de-restrict the balance of any one exclusive events. Credit it.
Yep, we're aware of that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If we have any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezone 11,007, George Hague, town of Cottage Grove.
George Hoagie?
Hoagie.
Yes. He's my father. He's 93 years old. Him and I live at 1834 Shadle Road, and we have rezoned so that we can keep our homestead and 15 acres as a farm at and sell the remaining 65 acres to a neighbor's farmland. I don't know what else to say. My dad moved on in '47, worked for a little over 20 years as sharecropper, and bought the farm, I think, in '68. He's lived there his whole life. We're selling the ag land so that we can keep up the buildings and keep him living there.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with conditions to de-restrict the remainder of the property for no further development. There's also some commentary that no RDU is needed to separate the original house, so the remaining 65 acres should be de-restricted to further residential development.
Okay, I'm going to move approval with the conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Supervisor Miles.
Question, the other staff comment on here regarding the lot should be refigured to meet the goal.
We did work with the applicant, and that's the best we can do.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezone 11,108. Andrew Anderson?
Yes. Andrew Anderson, 3757 Ryan Road, town of Vermont. That's my place in the lower right on that map. So I bought 11 acres, which is outlined in red up there, from a neighboring farmer in the early '70s, and it was zone A1 exclusive and as was the rest of the farm, although it's not contiguous with the rest of the farm. It's apparently a legal non-conforming parcel right now, and my son would like to build a house on that land, and so we are petitioning to rezone to A2-8 to keep the banks happy and keep zoning happy. And there is access to that parcel from the town road, Shower Road.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? We have Elizabeth Jockey. Yes, come on up. Yeah, you can come up to the table, please.
My husband and I own the adjoining property to the left. Our address is 3825, but we do not live there. Our only question is because of the size of the lot and because of where it is on Shower's road, and there's a deep ravine on the right, we want to be assured that it's in egress and where is the road going to go to their property?
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. And also registered wishing to speak in opposition is Julie Ballwick. And did you mean for it to be this one?
No.
Yeah, so it says, okay. This is one, because I think she's on the... Did you want to speak in opposition to that, Ms. Ballwick? I have the number, is it...
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll give it back to you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Mr. Anderson, you can come back up and respond to the opposition, but address your remarks to us.
Sure. So you can see on the map, that's an expansion of the map you saw previously. The building envelope is several hundred feet from Shower Road, and the driveway is fairly level from Shower Road into the building site, and it's the access road which you see mapped there is entirely on the parcel and more than the legally required distance from the boundary line of the parcel. So it would not interfere with the dropy land, and it wouldn't require that we have access across the dropy land. So I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Supervisor Montes.
Could I ask a question of the woman who's spoken opposition?
Ms. Jockey, can you come back up, please?
Pretty straightforward question. I was just going to ask you, did his explanation address your concerns, or do you still have concerns?
I'm still concerned, but it did address it. I just, when we purchased the Shower Farm, which is the one that Mr. Anderson bought from, we knew that he owned that parcel, but at that time I thought it was a minimum of 15 acres, and this is only 11.3.
Okay, thanks, that's all I had.
Just a second, I give you, in case anyone else has any other questions.
Oh, great, I was going to make a motion, but I won't.
I was going to, for the benefit of the opposition, provide comment on the, in our staff reports, staff indicates that, I think, in part because of the length and because of the grade of the driveway, the petitioner is going to have to get erosion control permitting, and they're going to have to go through engineering work to show that they're taking care of the stormwater and so forth before they're issuing a building permit, so I just wanted you to have that information as well.
I appreciate that.
In case that...
Because it's highly erodible land around there.
So in case that raises your concerns as well.
It does, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner or the opposition? Thank you. And then, Montes.
I'll just move postpone that based on opposition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone and a second due to opposition. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the postponement? No, and it is postponed. Mr. Anderson, you understand why? You understand why we postpone? When there's opposition, we postpone.
Do we have to come to another meeting?
I would talk to staff, just, yeah, just to verify what you might want to do. I recommend that you do, but you might want to get another opinion.
May I ask one question real quick, and then we'll take off. So it's a legally non-conforming parcel. We understood that, we were led to believe we had to rezone, but it appears that we really don't have to rezone, so we'd be willing to abandon the rezoning if that...
I definitely recommend, talk to the staff.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see what the options are.
Todd will meet you up there.
Okay, moving on, we have a rezone petition 11,109, Stephen Schultz in the town of Medina.
I'm Stephen Schultz from the town of Medina. My mailing address is 1027 West Medina Road, Marshall. I have two parcels of land. They were zone A1 exclusive prior to the egg preservation plan. They are now undersized and considered non-fort conforming. In the '70s, the previous owner rezoned a portion of the one parcel right where the improvements are to a local business, so I've got stuff that's not needed and two non-conforming parcels. All I wish to do is combine them into one parcel, meeting current zoning protocol, so it'd be A2 sub 4, there will be no other changes made other than some better documentation on the roadway and the right-of-way. And I could add a little more on that if you wish, but it's pretty straightforward, nothing's changing, just bringing everything in turns, concurrents with our present ordinances.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Go ahead.
Town has approved with no conditions.
I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Thanks for coming, we haven't seen you in a long time.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, it's kind of different for me to be up at the desk than for others, but I'll make it a reason to get up here raw.
Okay, good. Okay, moving on, 11,110, it's Cool Living Trust in the town of Medina.
I'm Jim Lowery. I'm representing the Coles family with their rezone petition. What they would like to do is separate, there are two existing homes on the farm, the homestead and then mom and dad's home. They want to separate those and create two new buildable sites on the farm. They understand that there would be two more buildable sites left. We also have, we agreed to the animal restrictions that the town of Medina puts on these lots.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Brian?
Town has approved with one condition, all four parcels being created by the survey or to have the town of Medina animal deed restriction.
I'll move approval with the conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,101, Ronald Cotter in the town of Dunkirk.
Good evening. My name is Tom Mattson. I am Ron Cotter's agent. I reside at 2321 Tower Drive in the town of Love and Springs. It's our request to divide from the existing farm a five-acre parcel immediately to the south of 1482 Pleasant Hill Road for the purpose of sale.
Anything else you'd like to add? And Mr. Cotter is here as well?
Yes.
But if, you're here, so, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't have 11,112.
I do not either.
Or 13. Carol Ann, Teresa Nelson?
Eric Nelson.
Eric Nelson. Okay, did you all...
You got it. Hi, my name's Eric Nelson. I currently live at 2802 Mullen Street, Madison, Wisconsin, and the parcel that we're looking at tonight is in the township of Oregon. We purchased the two parcels side by side last, end of last summer. And currently, what they're zoned at is the one on the north side, the top side there on the map, is residential lawn. The one underneath it is egg one exclusive, so what we're working on is trying to get it rezoned all together into one parcel as residential tree, and we're just planning on eventually building a single-family home there.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Brian?
The town has recommended approval of the petition with no conditions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
My town.
Okay.
Supervisor Miles.
Again, we have a comment from staff that what land under floodplain determination needs to be made on here, is that something that can be indicated on the CSM or a note on there to build outside of it?
Yeah, usually what I require is approximate location of the wetlands to be shown on the final certified survey map, and then also a note with regards to the zone A or zone AE in regards to the floodplain, so.
And normally, that would normally be caught in the permitting process.
So that's just a part of the process of you taking care of the CSM?
Yeah.
We don't need to put that condition on?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. We have Daniel Brunnig, town of Dane.
Yes.
Did you fill out a white form?
My wife has taken out the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on.
Okay, Dan and Kate Brunnig, we're from 6469 Bydeck Road, town of Dane. We're wishing to petition for a rezone of a parcel of our farm. We have two younger, or two sons that are interested in helping us out on the farm, looking to set up a house and rezone a portion of our property that is non-cropable for a building site. I guess that's about it.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion, we have Supervisor Miles.
Again, along the staff comments, so there is a transfer of a development right to enable this in this...
Yes, so, yeah, there would be, the staff recommendation is for easements and a restriction on this kind of farm to complete the TDR transaction.
Would be appropriate for us to have that as a condition of easements being placed.
Is the petitioner acceptable for that?
I guess I'm not understanding the full story.
So that the condition would require that the easements, conservation easements, recorded on this property to complete the TDR transaction?
Right.
And that a deed notice document would be recorded indicating that that easement was reported over here.
For that property?
Yeah.
Right, okay, yes, okay.
That makes it clear to everybody where the denials resides and what...
Okay, as far as the mapping there for the development rights, you're saying?
Right, and then that gets registered. It's registered.
Gotcha. So I'll show it the split of the farm, that one, and another split if they may give.
Any other questions or discussion?
Was that part of the motion?
Did you call that a condition?
Condition.
Condition. Staff conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with conditions, the seconds are without.
I think, second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor with approval with the conditions say aye.
Aye.
Anyone no? And it is approved.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next is rezone petition 11,114, WCPRW Trust, town of Dane.
My name is Stuart Wolf. I live at 7001 Highway P, D in Wisconsin, and I'm looking to separate four acres with the existing farmhouse and an outbuilding, so I can stay on the family farm.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve and seconded? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, we have rezone petition 11,116, KCJ LLC, town of Blue Mountains.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brendan Jesse, I represent KCJ, the owner of the 39-acre parcel. This is a rezone to allow my client to transfer about 20 acres, the north portion of that, to the currently RH2 parcel owned by Primesberger to the south and west of the subject parcel.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
The town recommended, voted to recommend approval of no conditions. Staff has a recommendation that there's an existing mineral extraction site on the property that has been abandoned and is ripe for reclamation, so the staff recommendation is to postpone action on this petition until the reclamation plan is completed.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So just to be clear, the extraction site is on the property to be retained by my client. It's the south half of that 39-acre parcel. That's the first point. Second point, we have a letter, you have the letter, I assume, in the county file indicating that he has to complete the reclamation by December 1st of 2017, which he has no issue with and every intent to do, so I don't understand why we would defer action on this because he hasn't yet done something that he isn't yet required to do.
So we do have that letter?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be in the paper.
Okay, and it says by...
Does it say?
Looking at that, Dan?
Go ahead, Supervisor Miles.
So I assume the recommendation is to give us some leverage, that if the petitioner doesn't act on reclamation timely, that it gives us some leverage, but absent that, what is, what is your way of enforcing that the reclamation is done?
Well, Mr. Jesse is correct. I mean, they really are two separate issues, and there is a deadline of, we give the applicant or the landowner one year to reclaim, so the CUPD for mineral extraction, that's not envoys, and so there is a letter by county staff that says you have to reclaim that property by December 2017. So this petition really is separate from the mineral extraction activities reclamation plan, so.
Right, and so what's considered, let's say the zoning's done, and petitioner does not do the reclamation by the end of the year, what is your...
There's a few different ways of going about... There's a few different ways of going about, you know, I mean, obviously, I think what I would like to do is just reach out to the applicant or the landowner and just try to set up a meeting of some sort and say, okay, what's the timeline of schedule with regards to your future activities without holding up this petition? So, that's what I feel comfortable with.
All right, I'll move approval. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion?
I think there's town. Oh, there's no town conditions.
No, no town conditions.
Question?
Yeah, so given that these are two separate issues, I was just wondering why was the staff comment that the mineral extraction plan should be turned in before this is approved? Why was that?
That's probably the opinion of the zoning administrator. And just to be clear, there is a true plan on file that it's been approved. It's not as if they're ignoring this and not moving forward.
It's the completion of the reclamation itself.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah.
So I think Supervisor Miles correctly characterized that as a way of ensuring, helping you ensure that the reclamation is actually completed.
Any further discussion? All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,117, Timothy Sweeney in the Town of Verona.
Chair?
Yes.
The committee may wish to take up the land division waiver associated with this petition first, which is later on in the agenda, so they may want to suspend the rules to...
What is suspend the rules?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to move down to the agenda to...
My name is Noel Preve, I'm from Williamsburg, surveying. I am representing the Sweeney family on the petition and that waiver.
Okay, so first we'll take up 2016 LD 058, Tim Sweeney, land division waiver. Yeah, where did Dan go?
I don't...
He's advising.
He's advising.
Can you go ahead and anything else you'd like to add?
I can discuss a little bit of the issue, absolutely. So we're proposing a rezone in the land division of the Sweeney's 39-acre parcel that they have. They wish to have one driveway for all four parcels, and that's the reason they're requesting the waiver of access. The lands immediately to the west of there did the exact same thing that they're doing, so they're trying to minimize the strips of driveways running out to the circle. It's the whole purpose to save land.
Anything else you would like to add?
Not on the waiver.
Okay. Support on the waiver? Any opposition to the waiver? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Okay. Dan, did you want to add to, we're talking around the waiver, right?
Yeah, this is really similar to a petition that we saw before us a couple months ago, the lands to the west. The survey area is showing a shared access easement, a 66-foot wide shared access easement that'll serve the remaining lots that don't have the road frontage, which are lots two and three, so. I guess, you know, the ordinance, the language in the ordinance is in lieu of the public road frontage, the other option is the shared access easement, that means the provisions of 75, 19, so I think that's the plan going forward. Prepare a separate document to lay out the agreement and all the uses, and that'll be recorded with these parts of it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Second. And a second, we have Supervisor Lawson moved approval, seconded by Supervisor Bullock. Supervisor Miles, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a sense of where this is, because I, I don't know if this is the same area, but I know we looked at an area that looks like this before, and there was some thought that to, if this is where I'm thinking, to the east, is there, off the map to the east, is there, I forgot, I'm forgetting the name of the business, Epic? Is there Epic Property, east of there?
Yes, yes, I do believe you're correct.
All right. And if I recall correctly, there was some talk that there's potential of east-west road connection, and if we do this, we're sort of basically locking ourselves out of the option of making the connection eastward long-term. Does that sound familiar to anybody else?
The other properties, and we said with the condition that they have to resolve the road proposed changes for the MR traffic that would be coming in, so it has to be a plan approved by transportation public works. What was the condition, do you recall?
County, yeah, the county highway department.
County highway department.
Are you talking about the shared driveway you were on the other side of the county?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, that's on the west side, but by making this change, if we approve this on the east side, I just want us to be clear that if there were long-term plans for making a connection to the east, that would basically be done away with this change.
Right, I think you said, you were with that day, we actually went out there like three years ago, and we walked it, but that is no longer available, is what I think you're asking and confirming? Is it potential on the road?
Well, one of the things, the potential, that this will do away with that potential of improvements.
Let me ask a question.
Supervisor McTannell?
Is the hardship provision that applies to some of these waivers, does that apply to this provision?
I don't think there's a hardship, I think they're just going about it that in lieu of...
I thought that the 66-foot frontage, that there was a provision in our ordinance as well.
There's a hardship, but we also have to have the other ordinance, the amendment allowing for us to do the shared driveway.
Well, I'll speak to it. I'm gonna vote no, I just see this as opening up the possibility for more lots and really haphazard development. I see, you know, I think a waiver is something to grant when there's a compelling public interest, otherwise the law before the waiver applies, and I can't vote for it, so I'll be voting no.
Did we vote on the waiver on the neighboring property?
Yes, to the left, yeah.
Which we did that like a month ago.
Yeah, just a couple months ago.
But it was with the condition that the requirements of the highway department be met.
Yeah, in the Sweeney's, the owners understand that...
Matt, here, the applicant is interjecting himself into a committee debate, could you try to enforce that rule?
Supervisor McTannell, anything else you wanted to add?
No, that covers it.
Any further discussion?
So, in regard to extending the road, from my memory, when we were talking last time, I thought it was mentioned that it wasn't going to be possible to extend Prairie Circle, and that was the basis for granting the permission for that other petition? Is that what other people remember from that one?
Well, the other one was on the west side of the...
Right.
So it wouldn't interfere with the road going to the central construction. I guess what I don't recall, maybe stash this, some information on this, the town, or maybe City of Verona's, which one am I offering that has any plans for road connections in those directions? I guess that would be the other question as well, is this in the ETJ of the City of Verona?
I don't believe it is.
I don't recall there is ETJ with this. I know the last petition that asked for the waiver with regards to the lands onto the west, there really, if I recall, there wasn't any discussion about the cul-de-sac being extended to the east. The conversation was about proper turn lanes to account for the additional traffic coming in to the dead end. So there's, right now, there's discussion at the town level with regard, communication to the highway department on how about to meet those requirements, and I think that's pending as of right now. But I don't recall any discussion with the cul-de-sac being extended to the east, so.
And was the waiver, or the condition that the requirements of the highway department had to be met, was that on that condition on the waiver or on the rezone?
I think those on the rezone.
And we have a similar recommendation for the rezone associated with this waiver as well.
Okay, but just for my clarification, for a question of staff confirming again that within the last, in this year, we have approved the neighboring property, again with the condition that meet the requirements of the highway department?
Yes.
So we had a waiver with that one also?
Yeah.
And we approved?
And that was approved, yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Supervisor Miles?
I guess I'm feeling a little uncomfortable voting either way on this at the moment, if you want to refresh my memory, talk to staff, maybe talk to town staff before approving. At this point, I wouldn't vote for approval, but if we want to do that, I want to be sure that we're not locking ourselves out of long-term option for the town, for the road connection. So I'd be more comfortable with postponement.
We have a motion to approve, and a second?
Motion to postpone, so is your order?
I'll move postpone, I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion to postpone supersets. So, any discussion on postponement? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponement, vote aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? And opposition? We have one no. So it's postponed for further clarification of the options. Is that how I would describe that? To May ninth, thank you.
Does that go with the rezone as well?
I think you're...
Let's go back. Let's go back to 11,117 on our agenda, and you want a motion to do that?
Well, did you want, so we heard from the petitioner, did you already ask if there is opposition, or are there people wishing to speak in support?
Anyone else wishing to speak in support of rezone 11,117? And actually, did you want to add anything on the rezone?
No.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anything else you want to add on the rezone?
The town did recommend approval of petition 11,117 with the following conditions: approved the understanding there would be one access point on Prairie Circle, a shared driveway for all four lots, and a driveway easement that would be recorded, and the easement in singular access point that be noted on the CSM. In addition, we have staff recommendation that the landowner, that this would be conditioned upon landowners paying for intersection improvements, meeting the specifications of Dane County Public Works Highway and Transportation Department.
Given that we postponed the waiver, I shouldn't act on the rezone until that's done, so I move postponement of the petition to May ninth as well.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone to May ninth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the rezone is postponed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, we have rezone petition 11,118, Kim Bigler in the Town of Blue Mounds.
Hi, my name is Kim Bigler, 2821 Cave of the Mounds Road. The proposal is to take the existing buildings and 5.6 acres from the A1 to RH2.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
The town's approved with no conditions. We did get a comment from the Environmental Health Division that this is, they do not have a record of the septic system and well on the site, so the recommendation is that there be a septic inspection by a licensed plumber to identify the location of the existing septic system and drain field, and those should stay within the boundaries of the CSM.
Mr. Bigler, were you aware of that?
No, I mean, that septic and well is from, it's quite old, so...
I believe that's something that could be accommodated through the CSM review process.
So I just need to get a septic and a well inspection done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Brian, would you like that considered as a condition?
I think so, I think if a condition, that within the CSM period that that be done, that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve of that condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, it was Supervisor Bullock and Supervisor McTannell, and discussion with the condition on the septic system. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it is approved with the condition.
Thank you. So can you ask, when do I need to have that done by?
If you'd work with staff, you'll... Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,119, Gary Barvian in the Town of Roxbury.
Look, Barvian, for Gary Barvian and myself, 80410, only have your life. Want to hit A1 or RH1, zone change to K2, and the expansion of 8/10 of acre to just over 17 acres, I guess.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That's all that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezone petition 11,120, Stephen Flash in the Town of Primrose.
Hello, I'm Stephen Flash, living in Primrose Township, Dane County.
Did you get a chin-stuff, fill one of these out?
No.
Yeah, you need to fill one, go ahead and give your testimony, and then you can go ahead and fill one out.
Oh, okay. So we own a house, we actually own two homes, we built a second home. Now we're trying to repartition our existing property into a separate parcel for the first home, as the smaller parcel size. We started up with, we start with three parcels, added a fourth, built the home on the, new home on the fourth, now we're consolidating parcels and rezoning or re-serving some land around the old home, so we can sell it as a separate parcel. And we tried to rezone because the septic and the well were just across one parcel line from another, so we're advised that we really should have the septic and the well on the same parcel as the house, so we kept to have reconfigured, and we were advised by the surveyor, it's just easier to combine these parcels even more than the bigger parcels, so that's what we're doing. Went to the town planning committee, they approved it. They did have us on the town board committee, but it turns out they were overlooked, so they asked us to wait. I agree with Hanson, so she would call here and tell us, tell me that the town planning committee had no issues, and advised us to go ahead at this meeting, and if this is okay, then we'll go back to the town planning committee. So this is an internal rezoning, doesn't affect anything.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Okay, wishing to speak in opposition? Cindy Heisel?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you can step aside unless you want to come back up if you wanted to rebut. Heisel, come on up. And Jeff?
Yeah, I'm Cindy. Hi. I couldn't really hear what he was saying, but we own the parcel on the right top corner, basically, yeah, like, right in there, right where the RH4 is. And so our concern with this, I guess we didn't have, we don't have a clear understanding of if he's just trying to break that into two pieces, or if he's trying to break out the one into lots so that it can be sold for residential at a later date. Because we have that five acres that is landlocked, and we use that for hunting.
And here, and here to build one house on top of our property, so we don't want any more houses out there.
And when we, when we bought it, it was, the township had told us that they weren't even going to be able to build on that portion of it. And so that was.
Because no roads could go in the, in the actual fields, and he put the road right where the field is. They had told us at that meeting, huh?
Yeah, but that wouldn't.
Yeah, I know, but if he wants to turn all this in where he can make houses out here, we don't want that. And it's all a small parcel that we got to hunt, he already took some of it away from us.
Yeah, we were told before we bought the land that it could not be built on.
The agricultural land couldn't be built on, and if he's trying to rezonate, to be able to build on it, we don't want that around there. There's already too many houses out there.
Right, and then obviously, we would be hunting in amongst a whole bunch of houses, which obviously would be an issue. And so that is our concern, is that.
Anything else you'd like to add? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Can I, can I ask if, if we need to at this point go further with our questions and concerns?
What other questions do you have on, do you have some zoning questions, or?
Well, like I said, we weren't actually sure whether he's just trying to make that into one parcel to rezone it, or if he's trying to make it into several.
So Mr. Flack will come back up, and he'll be able to address.
Well, I'm standing.
Correct.
As of currently, in this property that we own, there are two homes. Both have certification of occupancy. We're going back and forth between both homes, both have been built. We're selling one of the homes, which will be in a smaller parcel. We're going to live in the other home, which is in the bigger parcel in the upper right corner. So the homes have already been built, there are no more building sites. We agreed to actually deed restrict a ten acre parcel in the middle there in order to qualify to build the home in the upper right. So there are no more deed, there's no possibility of building any more homes on this land. It's just not possible. And what we're doing is asking for rezoning so we can sell a home which is already built and is being occupied. So there will be no more homes in that area. It's impossible.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I'd also say in terms of the driveway, the driveway followed a trail field through the woods, along the edge of the woods to the home site. And I go through a field that was specifically outlined by Martha Gibson of the Primrose Planning Committee in terms of where that runway should go. So we followed Primrose Township's instructions to the letter in terms of where the runway should be. And the reason he was told he couldn't build a house there is that you need driveway access to get to that property. And the only way to get driveway access to that property is to have the property we owned to begin with, because we have the driveway that goes back there. So the assumption was that no one would build, would buy that middle to that ten acres. The only people who would possibly buy it would be us. And we did that. No one else could buy it because they would have to have driveway access, which would have to go through our property, you cannot go through a field.
Anything else you'd like to add? Brian?
We have no town action.
I'll move postponement, the town actions, opposition.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone and a second due to lack of town action and opposition. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponement, say aye.
Aye.
And it is postponed. And you understand why? We need town action, and I recommend that you talk with staff and your neighbor to just make sure everything's worked out before it comes back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is rezone 11,121, Braden McCarver, in the son of, oh, Sun Prairie, Town of Sun Prairie.
Hello. I'm Bruce Rodmacher. I live at 2180 Highway T, Sun Prairie. I'm basically exchanging one lot for a new residential lot.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with the condition that a deed restriction be placed on the north of the A22 lot prohibiting residential development on the property. The existing house will be removed, and a deed restriction will be placed on the southerly A21 lot prohibiting occupancy of any new residents until such time as the, the existing residence at County Highway TT is removed. And I believe the staff recommendation to amend the zoning district lots has been, has been accommodated.
Move approval with condition.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, Supervisor O'Laughlin and Supervisor Bullock to approve with conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
With conditions. Next is 11,122, Keith Kramer, Town of Dunn.
Hi, I'm Brett Kramer, 4721 Shiner Drive. We just got married, we're looking to break off a residential lot on my dad's farm. It's pretty much right next to his house, unfortunately.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions. Staff recommends a deed restriction in balance of the property against further development.
I'll move approval that we say congratulations and reunions, and approve with the town conditions for the deed restrictions.
So we have a motion to approve with conditions. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,123, Kyle Clawwater in Town of Cottage Grove.
Hi, Kyle Clawwater. I live at 1939 Hubert Lane. We've been back there for thirty years, just about. Looking at breaking off two RH1s. Since we went to the town, got the approval, we've been looking at it a little bit, because the driveway came so close to the existing property, we want to change it just a little bit. And I've taken a new map into the town, and I'll probably have to go back in front of them, going to say, I have a copy of the map along, if you want to look at it. The proposed changes. Just to kick the driveway out a little bit, and the lots were so close, and because of the hundred foot all the way around the other drawing there, we want to change it and not have the two outlots, but change it to the red outlot. And elongate the one lot a little more, to separate them a little bit more for a better building site. Kick the driveway out away from the existing house a little bit more for a little better And that would, would square it off a little better, we wouldn't have that other hundred foot to keep the existing farmland altogether, we wouldn't have that other hundred foot piece going around. We'd be offering that other outlot to either one of the RH1s.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with conditions, including some deed restrictions on the 2A2 parcels, requirement for a deed notice that development rights have been exhausted, and a cul-de-sac building within ninety days of development and first residential lot. Staff would request postponement to review the proposed new lot configuration and to work with town to evaluate that.
Move postpone.
Second. We have a motion to postpone and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's postponed. And you understand why?
That would come, yeah, I would come right back, into a full.
Do you want this back or give to staff?
Yeah, I'll take it back.
Okay.
Do you want to?
I'd love to see a copy, but if you've got, if you need.
I can get another copy, you can have both, please.
Okay.
Work with staff, and we'd like to see it back by the ninth.
But what was that?
By May 9th.
Well, they can't get me in front of the.
Until after?
The planning commission meeting till end of May.
Okay, yeah, we won't be able to do it until they take action.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is CUP 2375, Mally Enterprises, Town of Burke.
I'm Mike Mally, the owner of Mally Enterprises. I'm here for Tutal Distillery, Stephanie Carne and Nick Hanson. I want to do a tasting facility in our building, and I guess I'll turn it over to them, they can let you know more if that's okay with the committee.
You all three did register to speak in supply.
Yes.
Good, so just to recap, I'm Stephanie Carne, this is Nick Hanson, we're co-owners of Tutal Distilling, the small distillery in the Town of Burke at 5353 Long Road. And the conditional use permit is for a limited number of tasting hours per week. The facility would be primarily used for manufacturing.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with seven conditions that are outlined in your packet.
You're okay with both?
Yes.
I'll move approval with seven conditions.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor O'Laughlin, second by Supervisor Montano, to approve with the seven conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,133, Dom Living Trust in Town of Montrose.
My name is Rick Dom, I live at 1236 Fritz Road, Town of Montrose. We purchased this farm, tore down the existing farmhouse, replaced the existing farmhouse with the subject property or subject house. And the people living in that house have asked if they could purchase the property. So we're here to create the land division so that they can buy the property. Property is served by a joint driveway that is obscured by the southern property line as it's outlined on your map, but there is no road access for this, it comes off of the joint, existing joint property that serves two houses, mine and that one. So, that's all there is.
Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Brian?
Town has approved with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, Supervisor O'Laughlin and Supervisor Miles. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Oh, should I actually said also wishing to speak in support was Steve Matheson. Did you want to say anything?
No, I just checked, I would.
You did register and.
Yeah, I'm actually the person that wants to purchase the property.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, next we have ordinance amendment 085, amending chapter 82 of Dane County Code Ordinances incorporating the Town of Berry Comprehensive Plan into the Dane County Comprehensive Plan. And wishing to speak in support is Town Supervisor, and you're the chair, correct?
I'm the town chair, yes, I am.
Very good. Mr. Burdick, go ahead, please.
Anthony Burr, Town Chair at Town of Berry. In anticipation of leaving Dane County zoning, we have revised our comprehensive plan, which is one of the conditions for doing so. We have now completed the process with respect to passing the ordinance in the map, and the town, annual town meeting has affirmed the board's decision to leave Dane County zoning. So this is the comprehensive plan we intend to proceed under. It is our development plan within the meeting of with Stat Section 60.626A. And we're asking it be adopted pursuant to with Stat 659.693B. There has been some confusion in the materials you received about precisely what we're doing. I don't know why does somebody thought that, that the one change that we were proposing with respect to development rights was somehow indicated our desire to expand development in Berry. It couldn't be anything further from the correct analysis, we don't even allow subdivisions, much less, you know, we're not even close to urban sprawl. All that we're doing is, we're trying to figure out how to at least retain most of the development rights that were agreed to in 1983. 1983, the town did its town plan, and it came up with an absolute number of development rights and allocated within the town. Since then, for a number of reasons, various properties have come under deed restrictions, other contractual obligations that have limited use of those development rights. And we were a bit concerned that if we keep losing development rights, we will contract our potential tax base, which we're talking about something in the next century, I expect. So that we wanted to be able to at least retain those, those property rights, or those development rights within the town. So anybody in the Town of Berry who still wants to encumber their property, restrict the development rights, has the absolute right to do so. You could do that with respect to your property. Nothing is being taken from the individual property owner. The only provision is that after January 1 of 2015, if you do so, the town will accrue a property right, which it can thereafter at its discretion transfer pursuant to our existing transfer development rights program, which was previously approved by the county board. Which means that if in fact, somebody decides that they don't want any development on their property, and they don't want to sell their development rights before they do that, because they can't sell their development rights, take the money, and there's no more development rights associated with the property. So they can all sell them. But if they decide just to terminate them by putting a deed restriction on their property that's binding to all future owners, then the town would accrue a development right, which the town could then at its discretion pursuant to the town plan, transfer somewhere else in the town. It's also part of the discussion, and we expect to have a local policy on this, the town is not going to be selling development rights in competition with existing town residents who are trying to sell or transfer their development rights. We're not going to get in the market to compete with anybody. Since nobody has actually transferred a development right in the two years we had the program, I don't think this is a hot market. So it's not a big deal, but it's something that we thought we should do just to preserve potential development for years and years in the future. Maybe, for example, let me give you an idea of what am I. Maybe, for example, let me give you an idea of what it might be used for. Say the town accrued five development rights, uh, and we saw the opportunity to get someone to use those five development rights near Brewery Road, which is adjacent to the Town Across Plains, and to break that property up into smaller units, so large, single-family homes were built there in the Town of Berry. Uh, we might restrict those, uh, transfers to, uh, an agreement not to, uh, be an ex, not to agree to be an extra twenty years. We could actually create tax base there and prevent the urban sprawl from the Town Across Plains, which we're threatened with right now because they want to put a couple hundred houses up there on the hillside with wells, septic, through a whole number of different plans that we're not really excited about. So anyways, this is what it's for, uh, and we think the town can responsibly handle this as it has, uh, other issues of this sort. As I say, Berry is not the hotbed of development by any means, I mean, you see us maybe once or twice a year at best, I mean, that's about it.
Okay.
So, uh, the, the other question, of course, is, you know, if, I don't know that it's really a big deal to the county, but, uh, you know, the, the new statute does say that it's to be adopted without change, so I'm not sure what you're going to do with it, but I think it, it would be appropriate just to let it be adopted.
Okay. Uh, did you want to wait until staff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Brian?
Um, I'm going to refer to Todd Villante on this.
Okay.
For comment.
Mr. Varda, is anyone else wishing to speak on this? Did you?
No, and, uh, even at our town meeting, I think there were only two people in the town where they're at all worried about it, and that's why we put the deadline on, uh, of January of two thousand and fifteen or whatever it was, uh, and that made them happy, and that I thought would be the end of it. So it's only, it only goes forward, it doesn't, there are thirty, thirty to fifty development rights that have been extinguished in the Town of Berry, and we didn't have that many to start with, but since, uh, eighty-one, there have been thirty to fifty extinguished, uh, which, and we've, we've had a lot of parkland adopted and so on, so we're getting in kind of a crunch. We had our, our overall tax base actually went down two years ago. I mean, you expect it to kind of go up every year? We went backwards, so we're just trying to protect a little bit of tax valuation here, not lots of development.
So, as, as noted in the staff report, there are a number of elements of this amendment, most of them, uh, as staff, we have no concerns with, they relate to a number of different things, whether they be, uh, communication towers, or, uh, steep slope topography, or long driveways. Uh, the primary, uh, policy included in this amendment relates to the TDR policy, and the, the language that gave us reason to pause and at least ask, ask some questions about it, uh, is quoted on the bottom of page two of the staff report, it says, "Density units or development rights intended to property which have been permanently restricted against further development by contract deed restriction or other non-revocable action by the owner of that property, after January one, twenty fifteen, rendering the density unit or development rights unusable at that property shall be considered extinguished, and an equal number of density units or development rights shall be made available by the Town of Berry for transfer from the Town of Berry in accordance with their, their ordinance." So a few questions came up during our staff review is, is, first, the definitions for terms of non-revocable or permanently restricted. Typically, uh, for example, when a, when a development right is acquired, say Dane County in partnership with, uh, the Natural Heritage Land Trust by, uh, a property for some conservation purpose, uh, typically there's a density study done, and they find out how many development rights are attributable to this property, and in some cases, they may pay, uh, a, a value that represents those development rights to expire those development rights, and, wrong term, I would say, not expire, that might confuse things, but to put them into conservation easement. And so those would reside in that conservation easement and be held there. Now, the question is, is that a permanent, uh, extinguishing of the rights? Are they permanently restricted? And the point that's raised by staff is, well, and we kind of had this dialogue back and forth with staff and Chair Varda, and we conferred with our corporation counsel, most easements of that type usually have some provisions in them where they can be modified or amended under certain circumstances, and maybe in some cases, if they're, uh, released in some fashion, there might be a penalty to be paid, uh, but do any of the conservation easements that we're aware of, are any of them really considered permanent? And even, you say deed restrictions that we see regularly here at the zoning committee level, those can be modified when we, uh, place a deed restriction on the balance of a property, those can be amended at some point in the future if town plan policies change, that may allow for some change in the density allotted to a property, uh, that can be modified through a rezone process, or virtually the same as a rezone process. So under what circumstances would rights be permanently retired? So that was one of the questions that we, we discussed, and there are some other aspects of the policy that seemed unclear, you know, these definitions, the procedures, how would the town, uh, decide how to allocate the rights that they may accrue over time, yeah, according to what policies and standards? Uh, so that was the path of our, the reason we started to, to question the, the policy a bit. Now, as, as Chair Varda's already indicated, there probably aren't, A, there's, there's not a lot of development activity going on in Berry, there, there is a small nominal amount that does occur, and in the number of circumstances whereby, say, these types of situations are arising, where, say, the county and the Natural Heritage Land Trust are buying property and putting them into, putting development rights into a conservation easement, I believe they have occurred, I don't know offhand how many have happened, but it's.
There are about thirty. Well, I know that, uh, the swamp owners property, there've been, uh, there was a large number there originally, but that was years.
That was, that was quite a while.
Yeah, that was quite a while ago.
So.
But we, this is only going forward.
Going forward from January first of twenty fifteen, so we asked the question.
And there aren't any that we could find between then and now, anyway.
Okay. So how significant an issue is this? There, there seems to be some ambiguity, uh, in terms of how the policy would be, uh, implemented, but then again, how significant an issue is it in terms of, how often is this going to occur? Uh, the, another factor that we haven't really crossed yet and talked about as Dane County is also, uh, now the Town of Berry has withdrawn formally from county zoning, and that occurred at the annual town meeting, but it doesn't go into effect until January one of twenty eighteen. So what do we do with, uh, plans that are coming through our process where ultimately, uh, we will no longer be administering the policies of that plan, uh, when the town is, is no longer under county zoning? So it, it's a, it's a question to be discussed, and certainly one that we haven't crossed yet, uh, and as staff, um, I don't know that we have a firm recommendation for you, I think it's something that we should talk about. Uh, Chair Varda did indicate under Act one seventy-eight that when towns do withdraw from county zoning and are no longer under county zoning, like cities and villages, the county is required to adopt those plans verbatim, yeah, and, so.
I don't know if that's in effect yet or is January one.
It's, it's a question that we don't know.
You know, we, you know, we can come back next year with this and, and do it again, but I don't think it's, as I, as you said, it's that big, uh, an issue with rampant development in Berry.
Anything else staff wants to add? Because I, I know supervisors have questions for both staff and Chair Varda.
I think that in terms of, you know, identifying the salient issues, the other aspects of the, the plan amendment, we, we don't have any questions over, it was those aspects of the TDR policy, uh, that we did have questions over.
There were a number of items that we had to change because the county was directly involved under the old zoning arrangement, and we had to come up with contingent upon leaving, the following will be in effect and all that's in this plan so that we can have a smooth transition.
You've been following and being a part of the opt-out option quite a bit, um, have you, in the state of Wisconsin, noticed, noted precedent of when plans were effective or when the county would stop? You know, is it when you voted, when a town voted, or is it a date in?
Well, the effective date of the tran, uh, all, we have done everything necessary moving towards our effective date of the opt-out, but we have opted out. Now, what does that mean under the statute? Well, I'm a lawyer, I know, we can all argue about that. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is, uh, uh, an open question, you know, obviously after January one of, of two thousand and eighteen, then there will be no ambiguity or question about it, uh, so that's where we're going, but, uh, with this, you should understand that it, you know, our, our discussion and our understanding of this is, you have to permanently restrict the property. In other words, the owner cannot unilaterally withdraw from the restriction, the owner can, can just simply put a new deed onto the property, uh, you know, on their own, they're not obligated to a third party, uh, they don't need consent from anybody else, uh, then that's not permanent. I mean, they've retained control over their property to do that, so it isn't permanent. So it's only in those instances where somebody decides, I don't want my property ever developed, and I'm killing off this development right on my property. If he, if that person and anybody buys that property later can never use it, then we want somebody else in Town of Berry to have the option of using it, uh, assuming that, you know, there aren't others for sale that they could buy instead. That's all we're trying to do here.
Todd, anything else?
Uh, I think, you know, again, it comes back to this question of permanency and, uh, Brian's knowledgeable in conservation easements, but my understanding of, of most of them is typically, typically you have multiple entities, you may have, say, Dane County, the Town of Berry, and the Natural Heritage Land Trust that all need to be, uh, party to a modification of that easement. So, you know, that's different.
I would characterize those easements as being extremely difficult, but not impossible to remove.
Yeah.
They're intended to be permanent, but they do all have language in there, uh, I mean, most of them are required by law, that says, uh, if the original purposes for the easement are no longer valid, uh, and all, and all the parties agree, that they can be relinquished. So I think that's really the, what's that?
We consider that permanent because the owner cannot unilaterally withdraw from it.
Well, that's certainly quite a lot.
He needs, he needs agreement from other people, so it is permanent unless, you know, you can change anything if everybody agrees, you can always change the contract if everybody agrees, but it's, with respect to that property and that property owner, it's a permanent, uh, uh, encumbrance on the property because he cannot unilaterally withdraw from it, it's going to be there, not just for him, but for everybody who buys the property in the future, who may not have agreed with that decision, which they shouldn't have bought the property if they didn't, but that's something else again.
So in those cases, those, those rights would be considered.
They'd be considered extinguished.
The town would see them as extinguished.
If we, if we find out about it and if we were able to obtain it.
Okay, Supervisor O'Laughlin.
I'd like to change direction a bit, um, and I'd like to ask you a question as chair. Why Berry, who has had very, very little interaction with our committee on rezones, as you've obviously stated, have you decided to opt out of county's?
Um, you know, basically, the sins of past committees have come to rules.
Uh, we understand that, and for that I apologize, because I wasn't on the committee go, was anybody else here? But.
We'd like to get back to the, uh, just because.
I guess, if you want to know what happened at the town meeting, it was completely unstaged and unrehearsed, but a young mother with two children and, and carriers came in, and she, uh, question was called, they pointed it to me and said, she didn't get to talk, you missed her, so she talked, and I, and I didn't even know her, uh, and, uh, she was very adamant that she thought she'd been treated really badly by the county, and that they had run her through a bunch of hoops, and she had to come back to meeting after meeting after meeting, just to break a piece of farm off from her family farm. Uh, the neighbor didn't want her to do it, and frankly, was being very unreasonable. They had a, a farm road that went right down the property line, he wouldn't let her, let her make it a driveway for the property, um, and he was here objecting and objecting and objecting, she took nine months, and she was very adamant about it, and after that closing, the vote went sixty-nine to nineteen, dropped out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to the ordinance amendment. Questions for Chair Varda, staff motions, supervisor ones?
Couple of questions for staff. Um, county will still be responsible for, not that they, we should, Town of Berry, but, um, subdivision platview and so forth?
Not subdivision plat, no.
No.
No. Strullen zoning, flat plain zoning, rural numbering, I believe that's it.
Road ID. Reclamation, plans of mineral extraction sites. Okay.
If people go out, uh, after the comprehensive rezone, you'd still be responsible for, for the plaits and.
That's correct.
So there's a difference between leaving now and leaving then.
Okay. So I've got the option, you took the plat review goes as well?
Yep.
Okay, so that, um, that impacts us on this as well, as far as, I don't know, this isn't a document that we need to, that we're even be using to look for consistency with those kinds of decisions. Um, that being said, I, I just think questions raised by staff, as solemn as they may be in the Town of Berry, these types of, um, situations, um, having, I mean, if there, if there's questions coming from staff, there, there certainly could be that ambiguity or, or lack of clarification on, on behalf of a property or so, I guess it would just be in everybody's interest to make everything as clear as possible, so that expectations are absolutely clear when, when the decisions are made, whether it's extinguishing of, of the property right or, or development right, or, um, whether it's entered into a conservation easement, so.
Well, we do intend to have a policy enacted pursuant to this, we don't intend to encumber our comprehensive plan with all the details.
Right.
But the policy would include that provision I just mentioned about not marketing, uh, development rights while others are on the market by other residents, we think that's important. And what I just said here tonight, what is, what is permanent, and permanent is when the owner cannot unilaterally remove it from the property.
And when a, when an owner extinguishes under the plan, when an owner extinguishes, not, not enters into conservation easement, but extinguishes development right, is that going to be a, an agreement to multiple parties, so like you said, they can't unilaterally change?
The owner, the owner could put a deed restriction on their property, um, uh, by agreement with a third party, and that would be permanent if they couldn't remove it without the agreement of the third party. Uh, on the other hand, if the owner just puts a deed restriction on it tomorrow, they can take it off again.
Right, but I.
That's not permanent.
But if the town is going to assume a density right because they've extinguished right, there's got to be some type of agreement between at least the two parties, right?
Well, no, the town doesn't have to be involved in any agreement by which a, a, uh, development right is extinguished on a private property, that's up to, that's up to the property owner. We have nothing to do with whether they extinguish that property or not, that retain, they retain the absolute right to do whatever they want with it on their property, whether they don't want it to ever be used, whether they want to sell it and make some money off of it, so it's never used on their property again, because that would be their last development right, they can do whatever they want with it. The only proviso is that if in fact, they render it irrevocably and permanently nonusable, and we don't have the absolute number that we had in nineteen eighty-three of, of total development rights in the town, then the town would accrue a development right that it could transfer at its discretion, consistent with the, with the Comprehensive Plan, as we do with other development rights in the town, uh, to somebody else in the town to use for development. But all those conditions have to be there before that would happen, uh, and as I said, we haven't even sold one yet.
Right, I was, I was just looking for that clarification, that, that if the town does assume that, that development right, wants to stop the property owner afterwards from deciding, oh, I didn't really want to extinguish that.
If the property owner didn't want to and could revoke it, then it wasn't permanently extinguished.
But if the town's already assumed the right and allocated it elsewhere in the town.
Well, we're not assuming that right. That right went away when the owner said it went away. What the town has done. What the town has done, which you do in zoning, I mean, the number of development rights was by creation of the town back in nineteen eighty-three, how many there were, the town created, by agreement, which is basically a social contract. And that's what, what we're trying to abide by. We're not trying to create any more. We're just trying to make sure that the town has a total that's within what was decided on nineteen eighty-three. And individual property owners can control everything about their property. They just can't make that decision for the town as a whole anymore.
I'm sorry, I used to learn to sue, just it's made of, of land, it's made available by the town. The development right would be made available by the town for transfer.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky concept, because you don't want to get into takings, we don't want to take anything, we want to make sure that they're absolutely retain all property rights that they have, which we believe they do under this. But it isn't really that right associated with that land that's being taken by the town and given to somebody else. The town is simply accruing a new one, which it could do. If the town got together and decided to change its whole planning, and decided they were going to have twice as many development rights in the town and go to one in twenty, it could do that. But we're not doing that. We don't intend to change that. We're not trying to encourage development. We're just kind of leaving the option of potential there for the future.
Understood. At any rate, I, I, I think there, from what is quoted here anyway, I think there is room for clarity in, in that, at least in what's quoted here from the town plan. To me, it sounds like the idea is that there's almost like a, a transaction of one development right going away on a specific property, and the town being able to make available that right elsewhere.
But we can't do that unless something goes away, so that we can keep under the absolute number.
Right.
But we'll always be under, because of the fifty or so that already have disappeared from the town.
Gary, you have a question?
Yes, so I just want to clarify, like, the way I'm understanding it, is they're not actually giving the right to the town, it's just with that absolute threshold, and there are more rights that the town created than what are actually present on properties? So that's where that's coming from?
It, it is, is within the town's authority to simply regulate the number of development rights and, and where, but we're not going to affect the individual development rights those property owners have. They do exactly what they want with it. But if they do extinguish one, so that the town as a whole continues to have the same number of potential development rights as originally agreed on back in eighty-three, actually something less because some of them are gone, that would happen. The town would simply accrue a new development right triggered by that event.
And it's not a transaction at all?
No, it's not a transaction, it's not a sale, not a sale to the town.
I think what staff pointed out is, is a concern here is that, that if the town makes available a right because one's been extinguished over here, they made this new development right available, but now the property owner decides, no, it's not extinguished, now you accrued an additional, you have the original right coming back, plus one of the town's assets.
Well, if, if he can do that, then it wasn't permanently extinguished, was it?
And I guess that's the point of the question, is what makes it permanent?
It's permanent if the, if the owner cannot unilaterally get it back.
Whether it's unilateral or multilateral, the point is that some conservation easements can be relinquished. So if a conservation easement is recorded on a property, you would consider that to be permanent, because it doesn't, because the landowner can't unilaterally do it. There could be circumstances, however, where the three parties who do control that easement could relinquish it under that circumstance.
Is the town a party to that?
Not necessarily.
Well, you can always handle that by ordinance. And if there really, if this really does get to be a big deal, the town will be sitting on a bunch of development rights, it can always give one back if the person actually wants to use it. See, the other thing is, if somebody wants to just see that their property has never developed, they can sell it to somebody else. And then they've lost all the, the development rights on their property anyway, so they can't develop it, and it'll be, remain that way, unless some future owner transfers a development right in.
Supervisor Lawson?
I'm going to make a recommendation that Todd and Attorney Varda and our corp council sit down and talk about this. So in saying that, I'm going to recommend that we postpone it for tonight.
Second? A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone. I, I take it that it's to gather more information, that there's too much unknown?
Yeah, is, is that a fair assumption? Todd, we don't need a long answer here, but just, I'd like to see, Chair Varda's got a lot of data, and I know our corp council can look at, and you can sit with them, and Brian, and get them all in, and sort it out, and when they come back to us, we can give us the bullet point, three, four, five things, and we're good to go.
We've already started dialogue with, among staff and Chair Varda and Corporation Council. I think we could abbreviate the issue and come back with.
That's, thank you.
Some key points for consideration or discussion, or decision points perhaps.
I'd like to know other supervisors or questions concerned, to be sure that.
I could be next week.
I'd say it's postponed until you're all ready to come back.
Yeah, despite the fact that Berry's leaving day, county's only, I've always got a lot of well with the staff, we generally work out all these problems, ultimately, over the years.
And we're all learning with this process. I mean, this, this is all different.
We could, I'm sure we can meet before the work meeting and have something to come back.
No, I don't think we're going to be, but you and I work it out.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, so I'm going to motion postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If anyone opposed, it's postponed. So thank you, Chair Varda, for coming. Okay. Next, our zoning maps amendments and conditional use permits from previous meetings. We have rezoned petition eleven thousand ninety-four, Julie Ederl in the Towne of Christiana.
This petition was originally, are we taking, how are we?
Just understand that we already took testimonies, so unless a supervisor has a question for you, you're not actually allowed to speak. But, but have a seat in case anyone.
I want to be available for questions, just not to get postponed.
Thank you very much.
This was originally postponed to, due to no town action, I think we, do we have town action on this now? Yeah, we do have approved conditional upon language being added to the lot identifying the adjacent quarry, and the driveway permit is needed from the town, having the driveway design include bump outs. There were also two outstanding items that needed to be addressed. There was a, some questions about the stormwater management, and whether the driveway needed to be widened. We do have review from Land and Water Resources Department, who I think I added to your, handed out earlier tonight, that indicates that they can get the appropriate stormwater facilities within the sixty-six foot. Frankly, it doesn't appear that that would need to be expanded, through the two hundred feet as the original suggested. And then there was a suggestion, staff recommendation, that a deed restriction be placed on the property, to acknowledge that the residential home site is adjacent to an active gravel quarry, and we have language that indicates the landowner, future landowner understands that the quarry activity involves blasting, heavy vehicle equipment use, noise, dust at operation during the evening or early in the morning, that may be of a nuisance variety. The landowner, or future owners, understand and accept the adjacent quarry land use, and further agree not to file claims regarding the quarry activity as being a nuisance.
With all of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve, as long as you're acceptable to those comments. Thank you, sir. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with all the conditions noted by staff. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you for coming. Okay, next on our agenda, I have eleven thousand one hundred and three, the scores and. Anyone here on rezone eleven thousand one hundred and three, particularly sure, otherwise we'll go with staff. Brian?
Okay, so this petition was originally postponed due to no town action. We do have a town approval now with no conditions.
I'm over. Second.
Supervisor Matano has moved approval, seconded by Supervisor Bullock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. And it's approved. Okay, next we have rezoned petition eleven thousand one hundred and five, that was postponed due to opposition, so I just want to give everyone a heads up that we have available and wishing to speak in support is the petitioner, Wendy Pachetti, and we also have wishing to speak in support, Dave, I can't read your last name, Moush.
It's opposed.
So, okay, that's in opposition. Cindy Mashuda, you are wish, you are in support, opposed? And Ted Ballwig, you are in opposition, and, that's it. Yeah, you'll want to, and I think yours got, yeah, yours got, I got yours. Wishing to speak in opposition. Thank you, Ms. Ballwig. Okay, so we do, again, and also supervisors, you saw some emails in opposition. To have those entered, we would need a motion, but.
I'll second that, and another question for staff?
We have a motion to, and a second to enter the emails that were sent to us that were in opposition. Any discussion on those emails?
Two emails, correct.
Correct. All right.
And one was an email, and one, I believe, was handed out this evening.
I have a question on the email.
Wait.
Let's vote on it.
Right. And entering the emails that we received, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Entering the emails that we received.
Which one did you receive tonight, Graham?
The, I believe the longer version with the staple one is the one that was handed out tonight.
The two-page version?
Yes.
Did you have a chance to review either one of them?
Not in any great detail.
Okay. I'm just curious to know if there's any new information.
I don't. I believe the, I believe the person who handed that out is here, may be able to, may be able to answer questions if the committee has it.
Would either party like to come up, please, and answer a question?
I'm Ted Ballwig, I'm a neighbor, live on eighteen eighty-five Range Trail. It's my way, Joe.
And I'm Dave Machud, I live on eighteen ninety-three Range Trail. We actually are just north of the property that we're going to be talking about.
Yeah, you were, I think we addressed this last, you had your opposition address last time. And just wondering, is there any new information here whatsoever?
You know, I'll go ahead.
Overlasted speaker.
I've gone to four different town meetings and trying to get clarification on the driveway. It's twelve feet wide, and it's over a thousand feet long, and there's proposed three residential houses. The town supervisors indicated I should contact their own fire department to find out what the restrictions are, and I was able to find out that they would require passing lanes and a hammerhead turnaround for safety, which is not something that was discussed last time, or I was even aware of at the town meetings. That's one piece of new information.
I just have one word to add on the driveway. I learned today by one of the committee members here, that the average family, the traffic on a driveway is ten trips, meaning if you go and come, that counts as two. So I'm very concerned, that means that would be thirty trips, that means more than one car per hour, and this is bordering our yard, where we have, it's, it's the side of the house, you got windows, you got lights shining, and the hot tub is back there, and the fire pit. It is, it is not just next to the property, it is next to our yard where we entertain. So more the, on average, and this came from a committee member, that's, that's a statistic. So it's very concerning.
Could you give your concerns to the town at any of their meetings?
We've addressed the town four different times, in different committees, and unfortunately, they don't keep minutes, but we do. And yes, we did, this, this one, we didn't have that statistic. But we did talk about the safety and the number of cars that come and go in a twelve-foot wide driveway. And it's, it's absorbent now, and then you're adding three more houses, it's just too much. And this, and the city is also part because it's a joint territorial area. The city said that they were opposed to this driveway in the joint meeting between the town and the city. And again, it wasn't put in the minutes, there are no minutes, but it's certainly a factor in proving something of this.
The only thing I would add to this is, if you look at Range Trail, what's east to there is Shiger Forest, which is Dane County property, right? And south of, south of Sunset is the Sugar River where Dane County bought all that land. It's a beautiful area, and the issue I have is approving an acreage for, of two point two, five acres. And the issue is this, the average lot size out here is five acres or more. If this gets approved, this will have a domino effect for sure, you're going to get more people lined up saying they want two point two, five acres, and it's going to change the rural character of this whole area down Range Trail.
Dave, I think we heard that last time, didn't we?
No, I did not mention that. No, I did not.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. And I think that's a very big issue moving forward. This is the first time they've ever looked at two point two, five acres, and it's not consistent with where we live.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Is there an issue with the fact that there's no road frontage for several of these lots? Is there, I don't see a waiver on the agenda.
That is, that is.
Unless they're proposing the, the shared access easement, like we mentioned earlier, the joint or the.
But isn't, but isn't that still needing a waiver?
No. There's been some back and forth on this. Just to try to clarify this stuff, chapter seventy-five states that in lieu of, and I know we've had some petitions come before us where they've kind of done both, and it's kind of been a confusing process. In other words, hey, we got the waiver, but then we're going to do the shared access easement. And it really is one or the other, is, is the way it's spelled out in chapter seventy-five. So I don't know if that's one of these situations, because I haven't seen a waiver with regards to, you know, the lack of road frontage. So I'm assuming that going forward, you know, if the rezon was approved and they follow up with a certified survey map to adjust the lot lines and create the new lots, then the shared access would be a condition of the rezon being approved.
But there's nothing before that addresses the fact that there is road frontage.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And what else did staff want to add on this?
Well, the town has approved with conditions, and they proposed six conditions, may not have made that into your packet, I can read them if you like, and then if the committee is interested in approving this, staff would also recommend additional conditions. If you want me to go through them, I certainly can.
Please.
Town conditions are, the zoning petition be amended to, I'm sorry, excuse me, town conditions, our CSM will be reduced from four lots to three, each lot would be two acres or greater, a driveway agreement be recorded and submitted to the town, the driveway be paved upon the construction of a second house, tree trimming be limited to avoid impacts related to oak wilt, any wetlands be shown on the CSM, and that building site limit, and that building site limit impacts on, on wetlands, and a deed restriction be recorded limiting any further lot splits. Staff recommended conditions would be, the zoning petition be amended to assign the zoning district classification of RH one, with proposed lot one, and lot three, and RH two to lot two, that a joint driveway agreement be recorded with the register of deeds, which meets the standards of chapter seventy-five. Driveway shall be paved prior to the issuance of a zoning permit or building permit for the construction of any additional home on the property. Essentially, these are, these are similar to the town recommended conditions, including restrictions on oak wilt and notes regarding the wet, potential of wetlands and the deed restrictions. So I, I think staff conditions are just a refinement of the town conditions.
Okay, questions for staff, the petitioner, and all else? No questions?
I'm going to make a motion to, to approve this, three lots instead of four. And with all of the conditions that both staff has and the town of Verona has, and...
Okay, we have a motion to approve with town and staff recommended conditions, and that's three lots. And Supervisor Motto?
I, I'd vote no. Actually, I don't, did we get a second?
No.
Oh, so...
I don't have a second.
I'll second after discussion.
Okay.
I, I would vote no, for, you know, there's no road frontage, it's in a, it really just is a way of injecting additional houses into an area that for reasons stated are fairly sensitive. It's, you know, fairly rural area, with natural areas, some of them counting on immediate vicinity, and I feel like our road frontage requirement calls for orderly development of lands, and this is anything but. It's a, a long driveway that projects multiple lots into a, an area off-road, and we've heard objections from the immediate neighbors as to the existence of that multi-lot driveway going through their, adjacent to their properties. So, I think that we have enough information before us to support a motion to deny, but let's be fair, this is a motion to approve, so I'll vote no on that. Thank you.
Other discussions?
I concur with everything Supervisor Motto just said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with town and staff recommendations, which includes three lots. Ms. Machete, has anyone been working with you to try to make this, or have you been working with your neighbors to try to make it more amenable?
Yeah, I mean, when, when we first brought it up, there was going to be four lots. It is currently a gravel driveway. It is a long driveway, so that was agreeing to pave that was something that I offered up as a way to prevent dust and noise. There is actually, I don't know if you have all the pictures, but there is actually trees all the way along the driveway there, you can see. So, I mean, honestly, if you're to drive down this driveway, it's like trees on both sides, you really cannot, I mean, in the winter, granted, when all the leaves are gone, you can see the neighbor's house, but barely. I mean, it's not right next to her like they are projecting it to be. And then also, we limited the amount of, you know, the, the concerns that they expressed over the oak wilt, we did reduce, we did make that so that, you know, put that in there so that that would protect, be protected. I think a lot of the concerns that they've expressed, you know, they have a shared driveway, the two of them, or the four of them, if you want to look at, they, the Machudos are up on the north side of the woods there, they literally clear cut the entire woods and then bulldozed the entire wetland to put it in a pond and to put it in their house on the hillside with no trees. So, I feel like that some of the concerns that they're expressing, they're not, I mean, they're, they don't want more neighbors, they don't want...
Okay, how about for your property, I mean, what other options have you considered that would be more amenable for that position that you are, you're, the concern not just well, you mean?
I've, I've worked for many, many hours and talked to Roger at great lengths in the town of Verona at great lengths in the city, and this is literally what we feel is most, most accommodating to the land. It's, it's been agreed that there's plenty of, you know, they're, they're building on one-acre lots all over Middleton, not to say that the town of Verona is doing that, but there's plenty of space on those lots without being environmentally destructive. One other thing that I, I did think of as far as the woods, they have expressed concern, and I thought maybe we could do a setback, you know, to, to make sure that a big, good portion of the woods would be protected from being developed in some other way. That's the only other thing that I've thought of that could possibly accommodate concerns. There is, to my understanding, we submit a variance once, you know, there was questions about the frontage on the road, and that the county has become more accommodating to that because we ended up with all these crazy lawn driveways and the flag-shaped lots. They are granting the variances when it makes sense. This, the two-acre lots, you know, they said that it's not common in the area, actually on the, on the opposite side of Shadager Forest, it's all two-acre lots.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to get from you, you know, what you, maybe all the research you've done, or other people that, hearing the opposition that we continue to hear, and it was obviously affecting us, what other options that you have for your property that I understand, I think you...
I mean, it was brought up at the town, that, you know, if the neighbors were interested in purchasing through the land, that would be a way that they could control what does and doesn't happen, but they really felt, the town really felt that this is within the long-range plan, the old long-range plan, the new long-range plan. So, I, I really don't know what else I could do to accommodate them, anything short of just scratching the whole, the whole project, which is what I think the only thing that would really make them happy, because as many steps as I've tried to take, it doesn't seem like they've gotten even minimally accepting of the idea.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Wendy, do you think that if we were to postpone this one last time, you could reach agreement with all the parties involved?
I do not.
You mentioned purchasing the property.
Well, I didn't, I mean, they, that was brought up by a town board person.
What if the neighbors were receptive to that?
Well, then I think I would have heard something.
What the, okay.
If they are receptive to that, then that's fine. I don't see why that doesn't mean that the lot could be created and then they could purchase the lot and choose to pretend...
It would save you the trouble of going through this any further. Again, I'm just asking. I'm more than willing to make a motion to postpone.
I, I would rather move forward at this point, because we've already been in the process for five months, almost five months, and I just feel like I've done everything that I could to accommodate, and I brought up to them, I did speak with Joan after one of the town meetings for an hour, and she said, you know, all these different things, and I said, well, I, I, if you're interested in purchasing the property, I haven't seen any offers.
Okay.
And that was what I, you know, I did put that out there, they, they have been borderline intimidating at different points, so I'm not sure I want to sit down with all four of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or further discussion? We have the motion to approve, and we still have this.
Joan, would you mind coming up here? And that's the last person I'm going to call on in this petition at the table. Are you folks interested in buying this property?
Yes.
Okay.
However, in...
Well, I don't want to get into negotiating this transaction at all.
We would be interested. I would like to know what the price is, and we would have been...
Well, again, I don't, we, not, our, our role is not to get involved. So, go ahead, let's run this motion. Supervisor Motto? I guess, I think the petitioner is basically saying she can do whatever she wants with our land, if you don't like it, buy it from me, and that's not how zoning works. Our job is to promote orderly development, and this is the one no vote you're going to hear tonight, and it's probably the one no vote you're going to hear for the next six months, and this is a no vote. This is not approvable. And sometimes, somebody comes and says, I've done everything, and then cites bad zoning throughout the town of Verona. Well, we know that the town of Verona is rife with bad zoning, we saw some of it earlier tonight, and that doesn't mean that when a bad proposal comes before us, that we approve it. And I also think that the city of Verona may have extra territorial jurisdiction over it, in which case the city of Verona will reject it if we don't. So, you know, I think sometimes it's most kind to the petitioner to say, let's have a vote on it, let's vote it down, and let everybody involve if they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Motto. Supervisor Morris?
And the last point, Supervisor Motto, that was a question I have is, is, thought somebody had mentioned that the city of Verona had objected to this. Is it in the ETJ?
I have no idea. I have not even looked at this for a length of...
I can't answer to that, if needed.
Do you know whether, yes or no, it's in, it's in a petition, do you know, is it in the ETJ?
Yes, we, we met with the joint commission between the town and the city before the, before the city, I mean, before the town completely approved it. The city had to approve it too, because they do have jurisdiction. So, the city did not have any concerns. In fact, the city said that their long slated plan was actually to put a road through where the driveway is cleared to Locust Drive, because that's the only spot, basically, between the high, or the new neighborhood right along the highway and Sunset Drive, where they could have a thorough street. But they did say that they wouldn't mind that not happening because of the logistics of putting it in since, at the end of the property where we were talking about, the wetland, it does go down significantly, and then it shoots up the hillside on the opposite way. So, they are not uncomfortable with the driveway, there's very, you know, good view, viewing on both sides of the driveway, so visibility...
All right, thanks, yes. Your question, I'm sorry, to the city.
Okay, so again, we have before us almost, there's any further discussion, we have the motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
And it, the motion is, or the, yeah, the motion is not...
It's a vote.
It's four to one.
Four to one.
Four to one. Ben, I'm sure.
Yes.
We've found in the past that when we've come to this situation, which happens very frequently, that this is considered incomplete, so to complete the action, I'll move deny.
Okay, to, to make it clear.
Right.
Okay, you're moving denial of the petition.
Correct.
Second.
And we have a second, any discussion on the denial? Thank you, Supervisor Motto, I, so the approval failed, but denial...
So, in other words, the committee had taken no action.
Correct. So, if we vote on denial, then...
That would...
What if we said no to denial?
Then, then we'd be totally out luck. We would just be floating limbo for the rest of the year.
Is there, oh, okay, and is a, I'm just gonna, is a postponement of possibility as in, if there truly is some other way for the neighbors to work it out, that could work out?
What's the action I would prefer right now?
But we do have a motion and a second on deny.
I know.
Okay, but again, I just, with the great experience of Supervisor Motto and...
Yeah, we actually did, once, leave something hanging that way, and we're advised after the fact that we had not completed action on it, because...
Right, so to me, we, we would still vote on denial...
Right.
But we could vote against denial, and then still also have the opportunity for postponement.
Or somebody could make a motion to postpone.
Oh, thank you very much. Is that what you...
I thought there was a motion on the table.
Right, postpone on some...
Okay, then I'll make a motion to postpone.
I'll second the motion. Okay, on the postponed discussion. Seeing on all those in favor of postponement, and once again, for me, if I may add, it is, we have town approval, but we still have opposition, and, anyway, that's why I made the second.
If I could add some discussion, I'd just like to say I hope the neighbors can all look out, whether it's a purchase of the property from you, Wendy, or, or all, or transpires, I think that would be the best for all parties concerned.
And anything else? Supervisor Motto?
Well, I disagree with Supervisor Ballack, because I think that the best possible result would be for this committee to do its job, and doing its job in this case would be deny the petition. It's isn't a, we're not marriage counselors, we're a zoning committee.
Thank you, Supervisor Motto, I, I concur with that. I, something you said earlier, and I think it does really highlight that this is very unique for us, that contrary to what some people have said, this committee rarely goes in opposition or, or any difference to what the towns voted on, so thank you for pointing that out. But we do have the motion and the second for postponement, and one more opportunity. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed?
No.
And one no, or two nos?
Postpone.
Okay, so it's four to one for postponement. See it back on May ninth, and it'll be one of them. I have rezoned eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen, Christopher Miller, in town history.
It was art, it's me, it was already seen, so I didn't know.
Oh, good, thank you. Wait, just, I, little wait here tonight.
I was just going back on the other one where you said it's already been seen, so I'll just hold off unless there was a discussion or questions. There's many conditions, it was approved with conditions.
Eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen, yes, thank you.
I don't believe, okay. So, yes, this was, this was originally, this was postponed to no town action and public opposition. The town has now recommended approval with restrictions on the zoning petition, and let's see, make sure I get the right ones here. We've got two sets of conditions, one on the rezone and one on...
CUP twenty-three seventy-six?
Yeah, on the conditional use permit, so...
Oh, just for everyone that's hanging in there for this late night, I really appreciate it, everyone that's here, just understand that it is different. Brian's pitch hitting, I guess, this evening is in a role he's not usually in, so thank you for your patience this evening, committee members, gentlemen, it's everybody.
Well, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find which ones are the rezone as opposed to the CUP, because most of these conditions, I believe, relate to the condition... So, I've got minutes from the town board, and I'm not sure, again, it's not clear, I think, in the way this is written. I think the, you know, the conditions that are relevant to the rezone are that the LC-1U shall be limited to lawn, lawn maintenance and snow plowing business conducted off-site. My interpretation of this is that the rest of these conditions that the town recommended would be properly applied to the conditional use permit.
And we do have in our packet...
It's also state removing the R4 zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Motto, yeah, because it is in our packet, from the other supervisor's.
Yeah. To remove the R4 zoning and limiting the LC-1 use to the lawn maintenance and snow plowing business.
And then here it says the standards of the CUP.
Right. So, I, I think removing the R4 zoning and limiting the LC-1 use to the lawn maintenance and snow plowing business would be appropriate to the rezone, and the rest of these would apply to the conditional use permit.
I'll move approval of the rezone with the town conditions, and that limit the uses to the lawn business and landscaping, and that was the removal of the R4.
If you want to do the rezone before the CUP?
Yeah. Was there a second?
I, I would second that.
Okay, and we have...
Because the CUP only comes effectually after the zone is done.
Confused, I'll wait, whatever. Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the rezone is approved.
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit with the fourteen conditions. I'll move approval of the conditional use permit with the 14 conditions recommended.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CUP 2376 with 14 conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Next, we have, any questions?
No.
Okay, next we have rezone petition 2371. Diane, think. Miss David.
2371.
Come on up. Actually, you don't have to. Can you give us an update, Brian?
Yeah. So 2371 was postponed due to public opposition. We do have town action recommending approval with no conditions. We have sent a letter to the applicant to identify the neighborhood concerns, and the applicant appears to address concerns. There's proposed conditions on this, including 22 recommended staff conditions.
I'll move approval of the CUP with the staff recommended conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CUP with the staff recommended 22 conditions. Supervisor Motano?
Does it require whether any of the previous opponents are here?
Nobody's here. Anyone here from, on this? I don't, I think everybody else is.
Good. That's, that's all I'm looking for.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? And it's approved. CUP 2373, available, wishing to speak in support is Dan O'Callahan, which you will recall from our previous meeting. Also wish, available to speak in support is Sean Hoffman. Registering in support is town chair, Mr. Dravinsky, and registering in support is that David Andrews. Anyone, is no one here in opposition? Brian?
There are 22 recommended conditions of approval in the staff report, excuse me, 33 recommended conditions of approval in staff report that should be in your packet.
I'm going to move approval with those 33, you said?
Yeah.
22?
There's 33, let's see.
Does it also say how, what you should eat for breakfast and lunch?
Yep. April 20th is the, April 20th memo from my colleague Pam Andrews has 33 conditions.
Move approval with 33 conditions, and the, everybody's smiling in the audience, so apparently they've all gone over them, everything's okay. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to, and a second to approve with the 33 conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging in there, everybody.
Sorry for the wait.
Next is petition CUP 2374.
It was originally postponed for no town action. We have action from town of Brooklyn with recommendations of conditions, and we've recommended that staff have additional conditions as well.
Town has approved it?
Town has approved with conditions.
And I'll, I'll make a.
Excuse me, with no conditions, and then we have staff.
I'll make a motion with, for approval with the conditions placed by our staff.
So we have a motion and a second for approval with staff conditions for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Todd, yes. Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
I don't know if this is what you were.
Yeah, I think everyone should know. Well, I assume I know what you're going to say, so.
We did receive an email from the agent on the petition and confirming their agreement with the, with the conditions, but also added to pass along his apologies to the committee for his behavior. He indicated that he let his frustrations get the best of him and regretted expressing them in the way he did. So he asked that we, as staff, would pass that along to the committee.
Because I was like, man, is he here tonight? He's going to be double E. But anyway, he's, okay, great. Any other, any follow-up? Okay, great. Plats and certified, certified.
Yeah, the land division waiver for Tim Sweeney was postponed, so moving forward, we've got the final plat.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we voted, and that was just, we did.
Okay, that was a poster?
Yeah, just really on the, you remember when the guy yelled that, Roger?
Yeah, you know, I'm totally blanking, but I just didn't remember whether.
When he said, thanks, Roger. Did you?
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, there you go, okay. That's why I, nice job.
Nice replay. Yeah, that's well done.
That brought Motano right back.
But I just didn't remember I was voting on it.
So the final plat, Taravessa is in, located in the city of Pittsburgh. This final plat consists of 198 lots, 253 acres. We've got one, two, three, four, four lots that are being dedicated to the public for park purposes. As far as major highways, corridors go, you have Highway MM to the west. There are arrows, construction drainage arrows showing on the plat indicating the flow against stormwater management. Schools are established, and there's various outlots reserved for future use are dedicated to the public for stormwater management, wetland preservation, open space, and pedestrian bike path. This is one of those plats that's located in the city of Village, so it's the 44 certification of non-objection.
Move certification of non-objection.
Second. We have a motion and a second for certification of non-objection. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we've got, next.
And the next one is the Spruce Hollow replat number one. This is a preliminary plat. The plat was previously accepted, and now it's before you for conditional approval. This consists of 12 residential lots, not quite 12 acres. This current zoning is A1 agricultural, so there's no change in zoning there. Kirk Total, our senior planner, has looked this over and has found that there's no conflicts with the, with the land use plan. Like I said, this is just a replat. County Highway Department has weighed in, and they basically have stated no access should be designated across the entire frontage along County Highway S. The right of way appears to be correct, and then the remaining conditions are just standard conditions found in the Chapter 75 as well as Chapter 11. Rose Control, start.
Move conditional approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for conditional approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approved.
That's it. Move adjournment, second, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
Oh, yeah, we want to.
Yes, I could just touch base with you real quickly. Todd, you two, give your.
Everybody, that's.